Seven. I got seven o'clock. We're going to open the meeting of zoning wars and appeals day twenty-third meeting. Please get your questions. But you'll be just two to the flag of the United States of America to Republican Republicans. One of the issue under God is local. The creation of struggle. Thank you. She visits my member. All right, okay, I'm likely case emergency. We have two access, one here, one here. Get out safe and orderly. We're in today's meeting. We'll see here about by this order on March twenty-eighth, twenty-two. Introductions down here, we have Kelly Parker, Tom Ruthven, I'm Jerry Marshall, Tom George, Jody Beck. We got clerk Sarah, Ron, but just development, Dan, coding person also filling in for John Mindmore. He's on vacation. I attest to the publishing of legal notices. There was two, they're published on May fifteenth. All right, everyone had a chance to read the minutes? If so, is there a motion to accept the minutes?
Motion to accept.
Uh, well, Kelly made motion. Tom seconds, all favors me if I'm saying aye. Aye, all opposed. You're going to open public hearing ZB zero-five-zero-one-twenty-two, Matt Fox, forty-two fifty-eight, fifty-eight forty-two three trail. Request to erect a fence six foot height to be located in the front yard portion of the lot. For town code fences being permitted are four feet or more in height within this proportion of law. Okay, that could see forty-two, zone instead of zoning. Anybody here speak for or against us? Picture, I'm Matt Fox. All right, Matt, just end up saying name and address before yours.
Sure, I'm Matt Fox. My address is fifty-eight forty-two three trail. Did everyone have a chance to see the survey where I proposed where I wanted to put the fence? I did bring a few extras that I can pass around. With that, I brought just another thing. I took picture of kind of where I am in the yard. So you can see where the eight feet is on the property. So some of my shadow, I share right now. So you can kind of see where I'm six feet tall. So you can see I kind of set it up to look like what it might look like if we put one up. Again, that's eight feet off of the sidewalk. Eight feet off the sidewalk is, uh, let's see. Eight feet off the sidewalk is twenty-six feet off the road. So that's because go into where my front setback is. You can see in the picture, my house isn't there. It's all the side of my house. Only reason it's considered the front setback is because it's a curve that I live on there. With the normal setback, it's about twenty-five feet and that would require a six-foot fence to be forty-three feet off the road. So instead I'm hoping to put one twenty-six feet off the road. A few of the concerns that were outlined in the findings. One was snow removal, which doesn't make any sense to me at all because it's eight feet off the sidewalk. So I gotta think when the snow pile comes through, it's, it's not an issue for the snow off the sidewalk. If it is, you know, I wouldn't mind compromising if there is a place where I can put it that is in front of the twenty-five feet setback. You know, I'm not opposed to, you know, finding that some difference in there and working out something. The other concern, you know, main concern was, uh, you know, the sidebar. Could traffic coming through? Traffic is a broad term there. All of ten to twenty cars probably come through their day. Can they effectively see around where I want the fence? Is it creating an obstruction that creates a safety concern for kids playing in the neighborhood? Which, you know, I'm friends with all my neighbors. I don't want to see their kids get hurt, of course. So that's why I moved it off the sidewalk. Uh, I'm hoping that's far enough that it becomes less of a safety concern for everyone here. Now, I know there was one, at least so far as I'm aware, one call in concern, which was that of the sideline. And in that call, they seemed to be under the impression that I wanted to put it all the way up to the sidewalk, which isn't the case. You know, I was moving it off the sidewalk. I did bring a couple of letters from my neighbors. I'm also aware that one of my neighbors called in. And at least that's what they told me. They called in and voiced that they weren't opposed to it. Uh, two letters there, one is from a neighbor across the street. And one is from a neighbor that is fifty-eight forty-four, just, uh, one that I ordered with Tom Kerr. In the findings, it said that I was looking for, one of the findings was that this is a substantial variance of us. And it suggested that this was a one hundred percent variance, which I'm not really sure where that measurement comes from, one hundred percent. Because I think that if you're thinking in terms of the fence height, I can put a four-foot high fence where I'm suggesting, but I want to put a six-foot high one. So if I'm doing six foot, that's fifty percent more than a four-foot fence. So it would be a fifty percent now, a one hundred percent, which wouldn't make it a substantial variation. Or if you're looking at how far off the setback line, then you could look at some other percentages, you know? It's saying, you know, what, what is allowed right now is twenty-five feet off the sidewalk. And I'm looking for eight feet. It's a different percentage from a hundred percent also. Again, I'm open to working with the town, see if there's somewhere in between that you could set it, but, and I think that's just about everything. Do you guys have any questions for me?
We'll get to the question in just a minute. Perfect. Anybody else wants to speak for or against us? No? Any questions from the board? So I have, you said you were wanting to compromise.
Yes.
So it's like the town has offered some point of a recommendation?
So there was no recommendation. I, I saw that too. Didn't make any sense to me unless I'm not aware of what the recommendation was. That's right. See this though? Here, do you see this? That I had not seen, no.
Okay. Can we show this?
Well, absolutely. We were trying to. So this is high there. I mean, this is still a six-foot fence from this.
This is the twenty-five feet setback line.
Correct. Okay, so that's, that's not a compromise. That is what it is, like that's what's required right now. Compromise would be somewhere in front of that versus what I've suggested.
Any other questions from the board? Any comments from staff?
I, I do have some.
Sure.
Um, this, this was brought into us. This is an interesting situation because it is not what we would consider a corner lot because it is on a curve. A corner lot we would say that would have, by definition, has two roads intersect. So that would have been a lot more restrictive and you guys have seen those kind of variances come in front of you. When it first was brought to me for my interpretation, because our office actually looked at drawing straight lines. So this was a compromise of where we were allowing it. This was actually allowing a six-foot, a lot closer to the front than what we would normally see in, in, in relation to a corner lot, which would be similar to a curved line. But like I said, we allowed it, well, I allowed it to go all the way up to the build line, which is at twenty-five, twenty-six feet from the sidewalk. We also talked to the highway superintendent. He was in agreement with that, that that was a good distance for a tall fence like that beyond a curve for that additional sight line. And so that's, that was the compromise. And then we said if you want, but I think more than that, we would have to come to you guys and that's why we're here tonight. We did receive a letter, as we mentioned, that was not in support of this variant. Up to this point, we haven't seen or been able to verify the letters that came in tonight. Those weren't sent to us. That's, uh, those are. So there, there was definitely things that the zoning officer tried to, to work with the advocate had. And like I said, we felt that we offered a good compromise with what was presented to you guys.
I appreciate that, sure.
So Matt, let me ask you a question here. But we didn't do it just, but if this board was to improve this fence, when are we looking at if we started on it?
Probably the end of summer, maybe.
Okay.
Depends on.
This is what I'm gonna do. I'm gonna keep the public hearing open, okay? We're not gonna make a decision on it tonight. I'm not gonna put it to a vote because there's two, just way two variables that just got added to us. We got letters of support that came in, talking about maybe you wanna compromise, whatnot to even look. What I'm gonna recommend is at some point you get together with the town, not tonight, I'm gonna do it, but then see if this is gonna work out. This board has to grant the minimum or minimum release possible. So you're talking compromise, you're talking compromise, I like it, okay? I'm gonna leave it open and then next month we'll probably get some more information, see if we can come up with, get a better idea of what's going on so we can help. Just try to help you out a little bit here, okay?
I'm, I'm good with that.
Great. I'm gonna leave the public hearing open then.
Yeah, I do have one question. If you put a four-foot fence instead of a six-foot, would that change the boundary of?
Absolutely. You need to allow it to the sidewalk as far as I'm aware. Well, about a foot off the sidewalk because of our applied, uh, power equipment and everything.
Okay.
Clear the sidewalk, but yes. Four foot has always been viewed a louder than five yard for site distance and everything. You feel a car can oversteer four foot. Ron, do you want to talk about the percentages at all or do you want to just leave that?
I believe, I'm going to, okay. We need to get over John and find out.
Matt, one more thing I'll say, you do have, you bring up some good points and whatnot. Make sure all, meet with them or call them, it's time to do this. Make sure all your questions are answered, okay? Because I want to make sure you understand everything that's going on and whatnot so we can do the best we can to make an educated decision.
Good.
Sound good?
Yeah, totally. Sorry, I didn't realize you would want to see the letters beforehand or whatnot.
That's okay.
I didn't get them until I realized that's not, we, we have to verify.
Okay. Yeah, so that's, we're gonna, yeah, okay.
Thank you.
All right, now we're gonna open, you, you can feel free to leave. You want to sit best for if you want, do what you say.
I'm interested in here.
All right, sounds good. There it is. I'll let you say it. All right. Now I'm gonna open the public hearing for ZB zero-five-zero-two-twenty-two, Josh James Russell, fifty-fourty, Aaron Dean Road. Act that wishes to erect an eight foot by forty-seven foot deck detached from the residence, propose front setback forty-six feet. Town code requires a minimum setback of sixty feet in his own agricultural. Is there anybody here to speak for or against this? If so, is, may I have state name and address?
I'm Jake Russell, fifty-fourty, Aaron Dean Road. Been there for forty years. Not sure why the setback is, our property is at sixty feet versus, you know, other places in the town are only thirty feet. My house is there before that road existed. That house has been there since eighteen sixty. I've been there, like I said, forty years with a dirt road when I bought my house. It's been widened twice to my side of the road. Not sure why that is because only part of it goes up the other side of the road. But, um, we're just looking to upgrade about a fourth time in front of the house, you know? We do inciting, um, putting out the sunroom off the back. So we're just, uh, um, trying to upgrade the, you know, looks of the house and very long for the long term. That's about it.
Any questions from the board? Any comments from staff?
We prepared two resolutions for you tonight. Secret type two of, as always, given is a resolution to prove the condition. I think the, the issue we wanted to ensure here is that it's indeed going to be a forge. And that become something that provide for an interior living space in the future. That would require, certainly not our attention against the real forge.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just looking, once the variance is granted, it runs to the property. So if you decide to move on somewheres and the next person up the lawn, then they have the idea that pay this focus and we've got more living space now. Then they'll be asking for a fourth time program. But that, those are the conditions. And, uh, we get the building permit, we require.
Danny, I can.
Yeah, uh, yes, we did receive a letter in support of this addition that verified and, John wanted me to bring up that we're seeing more of these. And possibly if I don't want Ford wants staff to start looking into the code to possibly make a modification or something to allow a percentage or something in the front. I, I don't know the verbiage. I don't really work out with this with John yet. But I do know if you're next meeting, you have another area variance for Ford. So this seems to be, I agree with Ron, we don't want to see these turn into living spaces and we have to be careful. But in this gentleman's case, the road's been widened, that distance has gotten shorter. I mean, he has a hardship, the house has been there for years.
My house was there before the road. I paid to do it.
I, I think there is some justification here. It's just, uh, I, I don't know if we're at the point in board blocks to look back at code so that you guys don't keep seeing these or if you would prefer to just see how it is at this point. So I'm looking for some.
Let's talk about that during our second part.
Absolutely.
Great. Anything else from the board? No, then I'm going to close public hearing zero, ZB zero-five-zero-two-twenty-two. All right, for deliberations and decisions, is there a motion for Mr. Russell's zero-five-zero-two-twenty-two? So let's see the way we can see here, okay? Accept it as it is. Is there a second? A second. Tom seconds. All, all favors, same five by the eye, aye, aye, aye. All opposed, okay? Is there a motion for the resolution? Yeah, it, yeah, I'll make the motion, the resolution to be accepted the way it is written. Just reading the conditions, which is nice and sound. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, so. Findings in board. Findings by post. Board on review of record on this application finds it to benefit to the act that does outweigh any detriment to community or neighborhood and therefore the requested area variance erected porch forty-five point two feet from the front line. Lot line said that the required sixty foot of setback is approved in the following conditions. The porch's addition, addition is to match to the extent practical to exterior treatment of existing structure. The porch addition should now be enclosed. Any light fixture being installed as part of the proposed porch addition shall comply with the New York, or, New York. Town's dark sky lighting regulations continue to chapter one sixty-five of the town code. And a load porch permit shall be acquired by the act that requires the start of construction. You understand the conditions?
I do.
Great. One more, please.
Kelly, aye. Jody, aye. Tom?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Derek?
Aye. So you have a variance between the town and what's on your project?
Yeah, we are, well, we just wait for this to come through, so.
Thank you.
All right, well, thank you very much, guys. I'm glad you didn't, sorry you had to show up for me.
So other board matters, so I, I'll leave it open to the board, but you're seeing uptick of these front porches. What I would say is that you guys, uh, have staff look at it. It's, you guys take a look at it. If you guys see something that you think happened, bring it to the board, we'll discuss it. But I think it's, I think it's probably a good idea.
All right, we'll, we'll put that on and then we'll have it on for your next meeting for discussion.
Yeah, we're in the meeting for next month, huh?
Yes. Right.
Does anybody else have any comment about that? Somebody feel? Just take a look at it and just kind of work on those.
We'll, we'll put something out there and then we'll get back to you next week.
Sounds good. Any other board matters? There's been some good training from the, same that training thing we do there, Tom. Nevermind, you're no help. There's, no, take a look, just keep track of the training and just don't let it get away from you. It's kind of towards the end of the year, they don't come up as often as they do during the summer. So, uh, let's keep an eye out for it. It's a boot camp room. That's what it's called, it's a boot camp over there. They get some pretty good training, they're pretty efficient on it. It'll work out, right? Public comments, any from the public? None from the public. Director of Development update?
Sure, we, uh, tomorrow night at the town board, it's a local law that is being proposed. In, involves amendments to zoning chapter one sixty-five. Uh, some new definitions of what a condition that unconditional building is for many warehouse purposes. Uh, we added a definition, uh, sizes for the accessory structures based on industrial standards today, trying to avoid the new per appearances. And we'll talk a little more about that. We also have, uh, in there, we are at, uh, you know, sign regulations for the limited industrial district. We did a little research one back to nineteen ninety-nine where they meant the sign codes. Some reason, you know, code never caught that one paragraph. You know, addressed the size of signs in the limited industrial district. And we had, had any applications for signs in that district until recently. And then it was just one of those flukes that, that happens. So, um, the other thing that the town board is dealing with is, of course, you know, the top spazo, they're funding the national bank. Expansion of those facilities. The issue here is that they're waiting on some traffic information from the owner of the spazo for purposes of, you know, state view of TV, determining when they have a signal where, where that intersection on eighty-six. So. Sorry, I'll just put thing a little longer.
It's fine.
It's kind of a spot on a signal though, another signal right there, you know? Interesting.
Yeah, they, they, they have agreed to one single between our tests here and eighty-six since we agreed to. It's in location, uh, adjacent, right, this is some reconstruction. That will help with that congestion intersection. Be able to get in the night traffic, it'll be easier than it is like, you know, it's, it's getting dangerous. Other than that, uh, we're still waiting on word from Department of Transportation on our sidewalk grants. And the, the PNT looking forward with some other code revisions as they are moving. We're keeping busy and pace of development doesn't. Yeah. We have come in now with the, uh, site plans for the apartment project, so when they're attached to this source. But then we started the northern section of apartments away and the apartment. And we're waiting anxiously to see who's coming with the corner forty-one and three thirty-two.
You're right, I'm weak. So I must know. I see it here.
Well, if it's, if it is dairy queen, don't think they're gonna be able to afford to have a large corner. If the price of those two lots, who knows? So, um, it's like, yeah.
Yeah, that's why everybody's, I don't want to like. Thank you, Ron. For Dan goes, I'll remind you, there's an open clerk of the board position. You kind of got it and you just kind of get used to Sarah, but Sarah, you know, wants to do other things on her Monday nights. So please, 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 seriously, his mom's reach out, they, they might be interested in it. I'm sure Sarah would sit with him on that phone meeting. Yeah. And help him out so they can understand what you're out. Danny, you got anything?
Well, I was gonna where the zoning officer had for a minute to mention that because I know John's very adamant about trying to find a.
Same here, we need.
So, uh, but let, let me just go over, last, sorry, we were, Ron, uh, uh, code updates for tomorrow night, about sheds. We're adjusting from two hundred square feet to three hundred square feet. And truly it's just a definition because we allow up to a eight hundred square foot detached garage, which means they have a concrete floor and a door to open. Uh, and the reason for that was for storing automobiles or motor vehicles or something to that effect. The industry is, and not just industry, but, uh, our residents have been coming to us with sheds that are just over two hundred feet. And we were making them put in concrete floors and additional costs because that's what code set. That at that level, you had to protect the floor so a vehicle would go in there. So the new code we have adjusted up to three hundred square feet with the understanding that no motor vehicles, so cars and stuff to that effect to that part of them. But what we're seeing is these storage units are now be paired up with a pool with pool equipment for. We've even seen some sheds that have like a playhouse on half of it and stored on the other half. But they're coming in, like I said, two hundred and forty square feet, two hundred and fifty square feet. So, uh, we, we met with the boards. I believe, uh, this should be approved by them tomorrow night. I can't speak on their behalf, but it, it seems that they're looking at this very good. With that being said, we have an application that was going to come to you guys for a two hundred and forty square foot shed. If the town board approves the local law tomorrow, it's still has to go to the state before we can act on it. But we're gonna hold that variance off because I can easily, if he waits a little bit longer, it'll be, we'll be able to prove it without variance. So that was, that still is a maybe because if the board votes no tomorrow night, then obviously we're gonna send the feedback survey.
Any applications we have next month?
Well, let's go on to that. So you just tabled, you just tabled the one.
That's great.
So partially your fault. But you also didn't have a, you, or you do have another area variance for front porch over on Coach Club. So very similar situation that you just heard tonight with the other applicants, so. But those, those will be the two on for next meeting. And then also I'll work with Ron and John to draft up something so you guys can start reviewing it and give us your feedback so that we can start the process of the code world, get things changed. Uh, and then again, clerk of the board is open, but on the flip side of that, we hired another clerk for the building department. So.
Good three, ten more months.
So we did get her some help inside the office one day to stop that. Uh, our new clerk, Carol, starts June thirtieth. So if you come down to our office or call, you might get her on the phone. So, uh, those will all be good things. So we're, we're still short a code officer as well. So if you know anybody, we're always looking.
I'm announcing. How does you acknowledge? He went, what?
I, there's two things I wanted to just mention. First of all, you, okay, some of you may have been around when, uh, this gentleman had a temporary use permit to allow agricultural equipment, construction of repairs and painting.
Yeah.
And remember it gone through the cycle of the temporary use permit. We checked all the records, no complaints, the operations, I mean, everything we hoped it would do. So it has now become a special use permit. The town has allowed for that type of use, not only in that eighty agricultural district, but in the limited industrial and general industrial districts as well. So that if, uh, is a test that has proven merits of the temporary use permit procedure.
I see that worked out.
Yeah, uh, as opposed to someone having to go for a use variance, which, you know, is next to impossible to do with. That was one thing. The other thing was the, uh, it's kind of awesome. Give us something I don't. Give us something, I don't.
But I, I would encourage everybody to read the DRC minutes. A lot of new development is not mentioned, but that's a great way to keep up on what's happening in the town. The other thing is the report that Ron gets out every two weeks that I helped out with a little bit, but his report is this big, so I can give him all the credit. Is another great resource to keep up on all the projects that are happening throughout town, which is many. So it's hard to sit here and give you guys the report on everything just because the town is going crazy.
There's neighbor, I remember Conservation Board is working on signs to identify the two drumlins that are over there in Hickory Rise that have been preserved and protected through the design. And we hope to have those ready this summer in place, strategic locations to help the people in the community understand how these drumlin features were formed centuries ago. Kim Lloyd is the chairman of Conservation Board and they're working on it. By the way, the Conservation Board is actively involved with the adopt a highway program. I don't know where they told it last time or not, but they went out before cleaned up the side of 332 from down here at 41 to the down line there. Looks nice.
Great. Anything else from anybody? If not, our next meeting will be June 27, 2022. Is there a motion to adjourn? Second? All papers say aye. Aye, aye, all opposed. Per adjourn.